So we have apologies from Denise Bickley and Richard Jeffries. Any others? No, thank you. Declara of interest, any declairs of interest? In the agenda? No, if you suddenly think you have got one later on, just, just catch our attention, do that. Minutes, are you happy for me to sign the minutes as a correct record of the cabinet meeting? Last cabinet meeting on the 23rd of July?
Yeah, happy to move.
Okay, thank you. So I'll sign as a minute. Item four, items urging, requiring urgent attention, I'm not aware of any. Item five announcements. And I would like to make an announcement at this stage. Partly because it's something I feel incredibly passionate about and strongly about. And also I think it gives the opportunity for me to say it as leader of Devon County Council. It's on the public record then. So, so the announcement is, and obviously if, if, if members of cabinet or, or Michael or Andrew want to come in afterwards, that's absolutely fine. So just catch, catch my eye and you can make comments. So anyway, it's, it's good to be back after the summer. And I want to begin by once again thanking everyone who's contributed to our new strategic plan. It's a strong piece of work, ambitious, clear and rooted in the values we hold here. At its heart is a child centered approach. So we must be judged on how well we serve our most vulnerable children. That is the true measure of our successes. But today I wanted to, I wanted to speak not just about policy, but about people and about the kind of county we want to be. About the values that define us, not just in documents, but in our actions. In recent weeks, we've seen a small protest, small protests outside a hotel in Exeter where the Home Office has asylum seekers. Understand that people are frustrated. The country is facing real challenges, rising costs, stretched public services and a growing sense of disconnect. Our county faces cut upon, cut by central government and a wholesale reorganization, which will prove immensely costly and disruptive. But I want to be absolutely clear, to blame all our countries and our counties' ills on a tiny minority of desperate people is not the answer. It's not true and it only serves to divide us. There are children staying in that hotel. Women and children who have fled war, famine and persecution, many are terrified and confused. I would urge anyone who wishes to protest to be mindful of their circumstances. These are not criminals. They are some of the most vulnerable people in the world. Many have been tortured, persecuted and are now waiting in the asylum system. Some will have come here legally and they're seeking safety and a better life. Among us would not do the same. I would hope that if the boot were on the other foot, if it were you or me in that position, that others would show empathy and understanding. That's what it means to be British and that's what it means to be lived by our values of tolerance and compassion. Hate and discrimination is in any form have no place in Devon. We must treat asylum seekers with the dignity and respect we would expect for ourselves. We must be vigilant against those who seek to poison our communities with fear and division. At the start of last week's council meeting, we heard from a foster carer in Devon. Her story was deeply moving. She spoke of two young brothers holding hands as they entered a new world as foster children, one trying to assure the other. That image will stay with me and I'm sure it will with you too. I believe we should extend our empathy towards the plight of those children in the hotels, to all those who are in danger elsewhere in the world. Behind every label refugee, asylum seeker, neglected child is a person, a fellow human being, a family, a story. As counsel, we are fulfilling our obligations towards supporting asylum seekers in education, child welfare and social care. But we must also support our communities. Devon faces significant challenges, many of them made worse by the inadequate central government funding. Our residents receive significantly less than those in other areas. That's not fair and it's something we must continue to fight. But let us focus our energy on tackling this inequity and not on sowing division. Let us tell a story that brings people together, not tears them apart and let us lead with vision, not fear. I don't claim to have all the answers, but I do know this, we have a far greater chance of success if we are in the united, not divided. If we choose compassion over blame, if we remember that the values we hold, fairness, decency, kindness, those words, they're foundations of everything we do. Thank you.
Just to add support to everything that you've said there then. And also as cabinet portfolio holder for migrants and resettlement, I just wanted to add a little bit there. I was expecting it to come up actually as a question related to my cabinet report last week at council, but it didn't. So, so I didn't raise it. So I'll take the opportunity to do it now. And just to say that it is the British values of kindness and compassion that we need to show as a council. And everyone in Devon needs to be showing those values. And really the only thing that separates us with them is luck. And I think we need to remember that and be mindful of that. And also Devon has a really proud history of kindness and welcoming refugees throughout previous centuries. And I believe there's a diary in Barnstable Museum, which was written by a refugee back in 1685. And a quote from there, after paying for our passage, I had only 20 gold pistols left, but God had not conducted us in safety to a haven there to leave us to perish with hunger. The good people of Barnstable had compassion upon us, took us into their houses and treated us with the greatest kindness. Thus God allowed us to find among strangers, fathers, mothers, brothers and sisters. And I think we need to be mindful of that. And also I was reminded that back in 2016, the good people of Great Torrington showed an outpouring of kindness for refugees or asylum seekers who are placed at Beam House in Great Torrington in 2016. And the Plough Arts Centre collected donations of clothes, et cetera. And they actually had too much. They had so many people donating things, clothes, even guitars, I believe, and toys. And they had to turn people away. So that kindness, that's the majority of people. I feel it makes me really sad to see the protests happening outside the hotel. Because we need to remember that there are people in there. And like you're saying, either these are the most vulnerable people in the world. And it's 200 people out of how many? 820,000 in Devon. And I really think we need to be mindful of that. And the main point is that we need to make sure that people of every background and culture should be able to live peacefully in Devon without fear of crime or prejudice. And that's what I'm really anxious about when we heard from councillor Said Youssef about racial prejudice happening in, in Exeter. And I really think that we need to put out that message that kindness and compassion is the way forward for the people of Devon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Paul.
So, thank you. And Cheryl as well, councillor. I think this is a moment where we turn a corner. So we had a council meeting last week in which there was conflict. That has come from the new era in which we live of online misinformation. So the people in the hotel, which is something I've been aware of as leader of the district in which the hotel is located for more than two years. The people in the hotel, as Julianist has described, I won't, I won't re-characterize who they are, but they aren't who the online divisive people who are inciting the protest are saying they even are. And it's very cruel to go and shout and yell at what is mainly women and children. I have mentioned previously that perhaps a rogue element in two national political parties online has incited further attendance at these protests, but these are very recent protests. This is the last month or so. What I think we should reflect on, dwell on and give thanks for is, just as Cheryl has said, the local community around the hotel have given nothing but love and support and charity to the people in those hotels. That includes senior educationalists, it includes local district and town councillors, the local town council and many of the children in the schools. And let's not forget that these protests last weekend were happening either soon after or before the children in the hotel were going back to school, where they have been beautifully treated. So I hope we draw a line under this now. There's been a certain amount of work trying desperately to put out the information and Julian has just done it again about the truth of who the people are in the hotel. And I do hope that all can take Julian's example and communicate with their members to say, actually, you can roll your nothing to see there. And that would be a wonderful gesture. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Paul. And just on that note, Michael, I know that one of your colleagues was actually at the protest on Saturday, trying to disperse the protesters and explaining he was actually there. So if you could pass on my thanks to them, you know, I thought it was a good example of us all working together to try and make, you know, to be less provocative and intimidating to these, these, these poor people. Anyway, but thank you. Right. So petitions, oh yeah, just to say that the live streaming is now on. So, yeah. Petitions, we have none to my knowledge, no petitions. Seven questions from members of the council. We've got one question from Jess, Jess Bailey. And Dan has given a written response. Jess is not online or here, so we'll just leave it at that then. Thank you for that, Dan. Questions from the public, we've got none received. So I'll move on to agenda nine, youth justice plan. As I said, Richard's not here this morning, so I'll lead on this. Just to say the youth justice annual plan submission, this is a statutory requirement that we do annually. And so this is the plan that's been submitted there. I don't know if Julian or is it John wanted to come in and, and introduce it or just to say any pertinent points that you think are relevant for us to highlight.
If I could, thank you, thank you, Leader. If I could just say the report, as you, as you set out as an annual report, is a statutory requirement on the council to provide an annual report. The service is set up through statute and the report sets out the partnership. So you'll see from the, in the arrangement, that includes the police, probation service, our colleagues in education and also expertise in relation to young Devon and voluntary sector as well. And I think if I asked John to outline some of the progress today, it's important to note that there's been no custodial outcomes over the last year, which I think is my understanding, but you might want to correct me.
Thank you for that, Julian. Yeah. Unfortunately, we have had one more recently, but that's a significant reduction. If you look at past years in terms of the number of custodial sentences that we've had for children in Devon. And when you compare us to our families, we get why you've just as broad families across the county, which is similar counties to the same makeup as Devon in terms of geography and demographics and things like that. Ours is very low in terms of those numbers. So we're still kind of achieving our aims there, which is really positive. It's a mortgage agency, it's health as well in terms of the addition of fortune, in terms of looking at the needs of the children coming into the criminal justice system in Devon. We were initially, youth offending teams were, were formed from the Criminal Justice Act in 1998. We've changed our name, which aligns to some of the things that you were referring to a moment ago, Leader, in terms of the labelling that can come from the word offender on our children. And what we're seeking to do and much of the work that we're doing is see children as children first and foremost, and see the behaviours that we are seeing exhibited from those children. As a result of sadly, more often than not, high rates of trauma for those children, high rates of neurodiversity, high rates of children not being in education, high rates of witnessing domestic abuse and other adverse childhood experiences. So build the pro-social identity of those children that are coming into our service and not building a kind of a pro-criminal identity, I suppose. So the, the report very much talks to how we intend to do that, how we intend to prioritize our prevention. So understanding the indicators of where we know that children are far more vulnerable to coming into the criminal justice system and setting out a strategy in terms of what we do earlier to try and kind of help those children. Obviously that needs to be done with our partners and with our communities. So we are really kind of looking at how we're linking in with other parts of children's services that deal with exploitation. And I lead on the exploitation strategy as well for DCC to see how we can bring in a contextual frame, safeguarding framework to the work that's happening in the youth justice as well. So that we're not always responsibilising the children, we're looking wider to that and seeing how we can make safe spaces for our children. We do have to, obviously in drawing, we refer to how we we are, we do need to contain our children sometimes in those behaviours. But that's child first approach because we don't want them to go further into the criminal justice. And when I talk about containment, I mean at the lowest level, so helping parents and carers and things be able to put in the boundaries that, that we would like to see them doing to, to, to support those children. But when we need to, obviously there are kind of statutory kind of responses we can use. So I'll just quickly kind of run through the, the key achievements I think we have made in the past year. We've seen a reduction in first time entrance of children. You'll see the data is a year behind, but that's in terms of the data, the update that we get from our partners. But that's a significant decrease. We're expecting to see a further decrease on that because we're introducing a new outcome of a deferred charge or prosecution, which where children and families or whatever the needs are, work with agencies. They may well end up with a no further action and therefore not be a first time entrant into the criminal justice system. And our re-offending performance is low and it's below regional and national average averages. So I refer to our family. It does say no custodial sentences and that's true at the time of writing for this report. Unfortunately, we have had one since then. We've made significant changes in terms of court practice for when children do need to go to court. It's a significant life event, so we've been working really hard to help prepare children and families when they're going into that type of environment as well, particularly trials. And we've done an awful lot of work with our colleagues in the magistrates and with district judges around that. You'll see there in terms of, in the report around our education, training and employment, we have a neat strategy that's been developed. And you'll see that number of our children with over 25 hours of education, training and employment has, has increased and is satisfactory. I'd want to see more though. Our offer between 16 to 18 year olds still needs to be looked at and developed, if I'm completely honest. And but we'll be looking at that in our next partnership board, which sits in two weeks. It's time. I think some of the challenges that we're potentially facing. We want to make sure that we're getting the right data from our partners and we've been doing some audits across child first practice with our partners, including the police, health, education, all partners and voluntary sector to, to look at how we're responding in a child first way. But we need the, the data in to have a clear picture. And so that's, that's, that's something that we're looking to improve on. And we do have some health gaps in physical health provision within the service and our CAMHS capacity is reduced at the moment. So we're working hard on ensuring that we cover that. The, the, some of the kind of restructures around education has impacted on us as well in terms of the attendance inclusion officers. And we've got some uncertainty and one has left at the moment. So we need to be planning in terms of what the replacement is for that, because we have been improving on that. So that's a, a potential kind of challenge we're facing. I think that summarizes the main body of, hopefully it does, main body of the report for you. I'm happy to take any questions if anybody would ask any.
Members, I think Chief Executive, Donna, you'd like to say something?
I would just like to add in that, to build on what John said about this is about cultural change and how we see our young people in Devon. And I'm pleased to say that in ongoing meetings and the challenge that we have been provided with in terms of for our care leavers, some of the work we've been doing. One of the, the most important thing for our young people is to have a stable home. So apart from our under 18s and the commitment from the council to create the right sufficiency, a major piece of work is how we work with the housing providers across Devon. Evictions sadly are very high for our young people in terms of the work that we've brought by working with the districts, working with what we commission and those provisions. So I'm, I'm pleased to announce that, you know, our partnership board was received the challenge of taking some of those outliers, fundamental statistics and getting underneath that. And we've got a commitment from the police constable, the district leaders and our own team to be working on this very challenging area. And it's fundamentally back to that culture of what John said is that yes, there are times where young people need some form of custody. However, we need to take away that concept of offender and see vulnerability and actually see that early intervention from all the partners is required in those situations. And, you know, to suppose to reverse the trend of escalating young people up the system, but more provide that early intervention. So I just want to commend the work of Andy Bates and Stephen Walford, as my district colleagues, I'm a police chief in this area because it's looking at, I suppose, the twin hatters in the room. This is a critical piece of partnership work that we all need housing providers. We have done tremendous work in finding homes for care leavers, but that's not good enough if we then have such a high level of eviction. So I just want to thank them for the work that we're doing in that area and as an opportunity to say to members, we need your support on this as well and our housing providers that are listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Michael, sorry, I'll come to you then, Jackie.
Sorry, I'll try and keep it short. I was at a meeting recently for councillor's advocacy. And I think it was one of our chief constables, it's hard to tell because they seem to change so much, was talking about what they face with children. And I think we all understand that you damage a child, you damage a human for the rest of their life. And I said that they were slightly wrongly, because what they were looking at was like saying that 80% of the children they pick up a second time still carry knives. That should worry us all. We should, we obviously are not getting the message. And I think that this is incredibly encompassing about society, about education, about damage to future citizens. And I think what, however you can manage to make it better, I don't know how. I think we have to put a lot of effort into that because if we allow our society to keep going down the tube and it's not going to get better. So my question is, how do you think we're going to make it better than it is at the moment?
If I could take that question, I think you're raising a whole issue. So the youth offending service, just to be clear, is very focused on particular group of young people who are at risk of ending up in, you know, criminal activity for the rest of their lives. So part of the intervention is try and address that. I think you raise issues about wider safety and that's as there's clearly intervention in schools, in government guidance about what schools should provide in terms of PSH, in terms of personal safety and, and, and that, and that aspect as well. What the research tells us is young people getting less involved in criminal activity. What we do have is a group of young people who tend to do most of the young offending issues. And part of our role is trying to be in with them while they're still children to make a difference and turn their lives around. And that's the work the youth offending service are doing. So contrary to, I think some of the media reports, actually young people are committing fewer offences as a group overall. But there's a group of those who commit more of the offences in that space, if that makes sense to, to you. If that, okay. So we do need to work with that and work with those young people to actually make a difference for them so that actually they don't end up, you know, going through the adult criminal justice system and then becoming re-offenders in that space. And that's the work the team are doing in that space.
Thank you. Jackie, and then I'll come to you, Dan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for this. It's a really interesting report. I just wanted to really focus on, on page 10 in the appendix. And there it's talking about reducing first time entrance. And you talk about the key achievements and one of the, the bottom bullet point is area for development. It was a defined offer for prevention of offending, follow a reduction in turnaround funding and staffing resource. So I think this is the really key part. And as people know, I'm almost banging this old drum about, you know, young, young people, youth services and for all of the young people to have access. On Saturday last, the skate park, the long awaited skate park was finally opened in Totnes. And it was actually difficult to hear the speakers who were, you know, there's a few speakers came along to do the, do the, you know, the grand opening because there were so many young people completely smothering that skate park. Fortunately, we had a good weather that day and they'd been there as soon as the terrace fencing went down. So that's stage, it was two days in and they were still coming in there, hordes and herds, and it was just fabulous. Now, this is an investment that Devon County Council has made, much of it through my locality budget. And people might remember even capital budgets that we had to spend eight years ago. And Southampton's recently put, stumped up the last 150 grand to make that happen. What a fantastic investment. And it really feels it fits into this whole thing about places to go, things to do for young people. And I know that we're looking at the sort of like the, the other end of that on this report. And I think it's a really useful report, but really it's a KPI, you know, it's a key indicator, important indicator of where society is not looking after its young people. You know, and a lot of them are ending up doing all these awful things because just to escape their reality of their somewhat, you know, unhappy lives for all sorts of reasons. So I just think there is one fixer that I just want to remind us that we could think about if we can possibly ever do it. You know, community use places, community use services, actually small fry funding for big, you know, really worthwhile investment. And I'm just saying it here because I just think it needs to be remembered because, you know, when, I mean, I, there's, there's a project in my, in my division in Dartington, which is working with spending much older people, but a lot of the work that they do actually goes back to very simple things, the things that my youth groups I have do, which is cooking together, having a meal together. People just finding that restorative kind of personal build, rebuilding in their lives. And it's awfully sad to see it happening to sort of 50 plus year olds. And now with this, you know, very young people who are trying to stop re-offending. But if there's no really for them to go and find new friends, not these awful Facebook friends who can be so mean, but for, you know, ordinary people that they can meet and, you know, have a chat within the corner of coffee and somewhere safe, safe, trusted adults. It's the best, the best building blocks. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you. But anyway, it's a good report and I welcome the fact we've got some reduction in numbers despite the fact we've had COVID. So that's all positive too.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Jackie, Dan.
Thank you, Leader. I welcome the report. I noticed at 6.6, there's talk about strengthening ties with the voluntary sector and it's referred to in the appendix as well around space and young Devon. I just wonder if you could talk around the difference that that's made through those ties, you know, what, what's forward as opposed to how that strengthening has changed possibly? You know, what, what, what's forward as opposed to how that strengthening has changed possibly the interventions or the offering or around that area, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Of course. So, um, we now have young Devon and space that sit on our partnership board. And the, um, the, the strength that that brings to us is a more community element. So, you know, we're not just being process driven and saying a child has been arrested and then had a statutory outcome and come to the youth justice service. We're trying to look much wider than that. And as councillor was referring to then in terms of what's happening in the communities, who are the trusted adults that can be there far more than the youth justice service or other partners can be? How are we making these safe spaces for children to go to? And youth services, youth, um, young Devon and space themselves can actively go out there and build those relationships that can be far more longer lasting. Um, we're diverting, excuse me, far more children from the system, but often the interventions where we're diverting them are short. And quite rightly so, the work that we're doing is seeing how we're linking them into their own communities. So we're not siloing them off from the community, engaging with the community services that are there. So that's really kind of, um, wish, we've seen evidence from that in terms of a response from, from both of those agencies.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, John, to you and your team for everything that you do. And also thank you to the partners. I mean, it's a crucial piece of the jigsaw in trying to make it, children's lives are better lot here in Devon. Uh, and particularly those hard to reach communities, you know, you talked about needs there. So, you know, the deprivation or social, uh, some rural isolation. Um, that's, it's good to hear and it's good to see the positive things that are happening with anything. And, um, you know, um, I, I think again, it emphasizes our need to work in true partnership with many organisations, including the voluntary sector. So thank you. Anyway. Andrew, yeah.
We just briefly do echo everything that's been said. It's great to see that it's making a difference. It's great to see partnership working, as you say, across the agencies. It's good to see all the metrics going in the right direction. So I think it's another good. I'm more than happy to endorse and I say things going in the right direction. So good.
Thank you, Andrew. And, and, you know, also thank you to previous administration for the, you know, we haven't, it didn't just start in May. It's been going for some time. So thank you. Indeed, indeed. Absolutely. Uh, right. The recommendation is that we endorse the content of the report and including the positive transformation within the service, which is being achieved. So I'm happy to propose that. Have I got a second, Dan? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's unanimous. Brilliant. So agenda item 10, um, the budget monitoring report. James, over to you.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor James Dzichowski, Cabinet Member for Finance. Leader, this report sets out our budget monitoring position at month four to the end of July and provides a forecast of our year-end downturn against the annual budget. At this stage, we're projecting an overspend of 10.1 million. That figure excludes the dedicated schools grant, which will be reported separately within the report. The table in section three shows the pressures by directorate. The most significant pressure is in children's services, particularly placements and staffing. With further pressures also evident in adults, together these reflect the wider challenge we face in social care, where demand and market costs are rising faster than the funding available. The report provides more detail on each directorate and the actions being taken to manage those pressures. I will say, Leader, our offices are responding quickly. Weekly budget focus meetings are taking place throughout September to keep spending under close control. On savings, we set a target of 21.7 million for the year. At month four, 16.6 million is forecast for delivery, leaving a 5.1 million gap. Work is underway to close that shortfall and ensure the full programme is achieved. Leader, it's important to remember that the financial context, Devon lost the £10 million rural services to populate in last year's budget process and we received no resport from the new recovery grant. Uh, turning to the dedicated schools grant, we are forecasting an in-year overspend of 53 million. We expect it to rise to 165.5 million by year end, 57 million above the level agreed with the time for education and safety law agreement. By continued demand for education, health and care plans, the backlog of assessments and increased reliance on independent places. Looking ahead, the government have confirmed the autumn statement for the 26th. Expect to see the outcome of the fair funding review consultation before then. Both will be critical for our financial planning. The report also updates on other key areas. The capital programme is forecasting a delivery of 258,8 million against a 268 million budget. At month four, H debt stood at 9.4 million, which we continue to pursue actively. Uh, and finally, the earmarked reserve position is forecast to increase over the year, providing some really resilience in what remains a very challenging environment. Um, I don't know if the, uh, the director or finance team would like to add anything to that.
Thank you, James. Angie, anything?
Nothing I'd like to add at the moment, but happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Members, any queries, questions? Andrew? Michael?
It's 30 days, nearly. I'm surprised after four months you haven't got a grip of this yet. You've got any plans of how to get the overspend under control?
He's one of the, I think, what I'd say is, I mean, it is an overspend and obviously we are working to bring that under control. It's, it's, it's a lot lower than, than I've seen in previous years at the council. So, yeah, no, but I appreciate what you're saying, Andrew. And, and, you know, James, I don't know if you want to go into the details. I mean, we've brought it down and particularly, although, I mean, as we know, send is a massive issue for this council, as is for many councils across the country. Uh, and, or the, we've managed to rein that into a certain extent, but nowhere near what we need to get to. And it is a continuing issue and problem that we've got, uh, within the council. We are expecting a, um, a government paper in quite soon, is it? Yeah, in early autumn or, well, we're in early autumn, but so in the next month or so, which hopefully will give us some direction uh, as to how we are intending to, to deal with this because we're not alone in it. Albeit we are, um, we have been a bit of an outlier, but, uh, yeah. James, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Uh, thank you, Leader. Obviously, I, I'm sure the office, they want to give some technical details, but it is an improvement situation from the previous budget monitoring report. Um, and in month six, we will give a, a deeper update, um, but I, I, I expect this to improve over the coming months.
Angie, did you want to add anything there? I mean, it's, um, hear what you're saying, Andrew. Let's, you know, let's hope that the next monitoring report, I think that's what in a couple of months' time or three months' time. Shows that we have absolutely improved it and look to close that budget. I mean, we, we intend to have a balanced budget by the end of the financial year. That's our, and that's what we will do. Yeah. Okay. Any more? James, you want to propose the recommendations, that's to note it and, um, and, and the, and the more detailed in the budgets, noting those as well?
I am, Leader, happy to move the topic.
So I'll second that. I mean, it's a noting exercise. So are we all happy to note those? Yeah. Thank you. Right. Agenda item 11, uh, that is transport capital programme. Um, Dan, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. Uh, you will, members, you will note that this is a shared report. So I will, I'll come to the cabinet member for finance presently so that he can speak on it too. But, um, I think I'll also ask the directors to update us in a moment on where this sits in line with the new strategic plan. But immediately in the short term, I think what cabinet need to know is you see the recommendations there. You're being asked to update the allocation of budget and approve an increase in the 25, 26 capital programme by that given sum of just under half a million with an explanation there that that's coming from external contributions, external grants and developer contributions. It's also worth noting cabinet, this will be the last time that such a report comes because in future it will go to the combined county authority at the strategic level. So this is the last time we'll see this. In terms of detail, uh, where you will want to find what you're looking at specifically, you will find a 2.7. The current government grant funded schemes broken down. You'll see there, there's a nice table there for you that takes you across projects. If you go through to the end of the report, you will see at 12.2, there is the summary, which basically tells you the most important bit, which is that, yes, we are increasing the capital programme, but just to stress, that's additional funding coming from external contributions, external grant and developer contributions. And then the other thing I would then draw your attention to is in the appendix, you will find at page 67 on your report, big 67 at the bottom of the page, you will see there how those enhancements are actually broken down. And I'll be spent on the credit, the rate of income, Hampton, exited the cram book, I've read multi-use part, the old walking, at Lombrad there. There, there are some amounts broken down for you there specifically on the uplifts, the externals on top of what we've already agreed. So you've got everything there. I think you're not being asked to agree new spend from this council. You're just being asked to rubber stamp an endorsement of those uplifts from external sources. Director, did you want to talk about the strategic plan and then we'll come to cabinet member finance afterwards, Leader, if we may?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Meg, do you want to?
So I think I particularly draw to your attention, um, two of your strategic plan priorities. The first one, continuous service improvement, where the commitment is about increase lobbying for increased national funding. I think I'd like to draw to your attention that 12 and a half million of DCC funding brings in an additional 98 million. So significant kind of, um, element of where we're putting in money and we're managing to draw down from other people. And the other one I especially want to mention is agreeing Devon for future generations and embedding sustainability into development. That's me paraphrasing, forgive me. But if you, again, I'd like to highlight 54% of the L T P is allocated to active travel schemes and 12% on public transport. So that aligns really well with the Devon carbon plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Um, should we bring in James now? Yes, James.
Uh, thank you, Leader. Um, Councillor James Dzichowski, Cabinet Member for Finance. The director has somewhat stole my thunder there, but I will, I will, uh, carry on from a financial point of view. It is worth recognizing as the director alluded to the 8.7 million contribution from this council. We're unlocking 98 million pound of external investment. Uh, this is excellent leverage and demonstrates real value for money. The additional 495,000 had increased in the programme is entirely funded from grants and contributions. So there's no extra burden on our core finances. In terms of performance, uh, the programme is extensive, covering major schemes, growth areas and our market coastal towns. And importantly, uh, around 70% of the ITB is allocation is directed towards sustainable active travel. So we're strongly against our priorities and health, wellbeing and climate. The success we've had in securing external funding through highly competitive national process is also something we should be proud of. On risk, the programme is ambitious but carefully managed. Over programming is used prudently keeps schemes moving. Monthly monitoring is in place and there is built in flexibilities if pressures arise. Even where costs have escalated, as with the Freeport Bridge, the risks are being managed proactively through reallocation and phased contracting. Uh, Leader, overall, this is not just a list of, uh, projects, but a programme designed to balance affordability, deliverability and our strategic priorities. And I think it puts us in a strong position for the, the future transfer of transport responsibilities.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Um, Dan, did you want to add any more?
I would invite Cass Houghton to come in.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. It's a great jacket.
Thank you. So this, um, is, you know, well within also my portfolio brief of, of climate emergency and of course the, um, public transport. And I think this is a really good piece of work. It's 20 years coming in as from outside positions because of the, what the position that we're taking on this. The bus service improvement planner that's been going on for the last two or three years, if not slightly longer than that, has really shown that we can actually by investing, help people to change their habits and actually access buses. That's what, that, a lot of that was all about. Um, the district council's inputs towards walking and cycling, all the work that they did on the scoping, that's starting to show how it can actually come forward towards us. And including the active travel funds, which of course is, so we've been, we've been really well on track for the last few years with this. And so this money now coming in is actually starting to make these, you know, as we approve these, the next tranches of funding as we, as we do, is actually just saying yes to more and showing the success that we can make as we do it. More recently, there's been far more information being made available widely about the improvements to health and wellbeing from these kind of investments to people getting out and walking and cycling. And I hope that what we will start to see is that more young people can actually cycle to school or walk to school because some of those routes will become safer as we make the streets safer. So I think in terms of meeting our strategic objectives as it's set out at the bottom of the report, how we're ticking the boxes with sort of large positives and moderate positives. I think that recognizing that transport is one third of our carbon footprint. And if we can deal with getting people out of cars and into public transport and out of their cars completely for walking and cycling locally, then I think that makes a massive difference. And I think also helping our communities to feel more connected. And by being able to walk, they can meet each other and have all those positive social benefits too. I think there's nothing not to like about this. So absolutely supportive.
Thank you, Jackie. That's, um, good news. Members, Andrew, did you want to say anything?
Well, really, it is what it is. We do, we do with more money and do more projects, but yeah, it's, it's good to be, see the money being spent. Projects moving forward.
Okay. Um, Michael, anything to add?
Yeah, I think that's been covered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And any other members? No. From a personal point of view, I'd just like to thank, um, the 258,000 we spent on the minor roads around Slapton Line. It means I can now go to some of those parish councils. Um, no, that's much appreciated. So thank you. Thank you for everything and thank you, Dan, Jackie, for the work you're doing there. Um, so Dan, if you, do you, if you propose recommendations?
Very happy to make the recommendations on block as shown, Leader.
Yeah. And a second, Jackie, have to say, Jackie's seconding that. So can I see all those in favour, please show? Thank you. That's unanimous. Um, agenda item 12, Bramley Bridge. That's you again, Dan.
Thank you, Leader. Um, Bramley Bridge, a replacement of, of Bolt Bridge. So I would suggest, uh, uh, you know, another good news story, not good in the sense that we have to replace the bridge, but good that we are replacing the bridge, quite frankly, you know. You can see here that it's, there's a 7.92 million pound project. There are basically, um, options of what to do. And, and you can see that those are in part four of the report and they're really simple, actually. We can do nothing. We can, we can try and repair. We can place on it. Just replace on the existing line or there are real line options. The report is pretty comprehensive. It shows you the plan of what we'd like to do. I don't think, I think it really speaks to itself in all honesty. It's, it's a pretty straightforward report. We're asking for you to give approval to the bridge that, that we can have, that we can start the CPO, that we can delegate an authority to the director, um, you know, around the, the, the contract for a bridge replacement scheme. And, and we can give her delegated authority for minor changes to the scheme, really. What we're asking cabinet in principle is to approve money set aside in the bridges budget to replace the new bridge where it's necessary. At Bramley. So I don't think I need to say anything else really, Leader.
No, no, thank you, Dan. I, I think you're right. I mean, James.
Uh, thank you, Leader. As the local member for Clumpton and Bradnich, I welcome this report and strongly support the recommendations. The B3181 is not just a local road. It is the vital link between Clumpton and Exeter. When the M5 is closed, it becomes the county's official diversion route. Securing the resilience of this crossing is essential for residents, businesses and Devon's wider connectivity. The existing bridge has reached the end of its life. Replacing it now ensures safety and reliability for the next 120 years. This scheme goes further. It delivers improved road alignment, safer pedestrian facilities, flood resilience and biodiversity net gain. Um, Leader, I particularly want to thank officers for listening to our local councils and adapting the work plan to minimise daytime disruption. That, I'm really grateful for that. Um, and that responsiveness will make a real difference for our communities. Leader, this is a significant investment, but it's one that represents value, avoids future costly failures and strengthens our infrastructure. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, James. Um, yeah. And any other members? Andrew?
I concur. It's an important, it's an important road. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and.
It needs to be done.
No, thank you. And Michael? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I didn't say much about it, Lee, to be fair. It's, it's, you know, it is a no brainer. We have, we have this, we have our budgets for exactly these reasons. And when they need to be done, they need to be done. So on that, I'll have to move the recommendations.
Yeah. And can I have a second for that? James seconded. So all those in favour, please show. Thank you. Um, agenda item 13, endorsement of the Exeter National Park Management Plan. Jackie?
Thank you. So it's, this is a, is what it is. It's a national, national park. We've got two in Devon, Exmoor and Dartmoor. And this is the new management plan that we're obliged to provide for five year plans. This comes through from 2023 when we've been, since we've been required, I think it was the Leveling Up and Regeneration Act 2023, which we have a duty to further propose the purpose of national parks. And so there's quite a lot of extras that have been done to this. It's, it's a very long, long plan. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to really read it all through, but I would say I really. It's, it's a very long, long plan. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to really read it all through, but I would say I really encourage you to do so because it is really fascinating. It shows all the different habitats, the wildlife, the clear knowledge and data sets that exist around these, this fantastic place that we have in our care. And I think this is a really well put together plan. It's been well consulted on. The public views have been incorporated. Now it's just up to us to endorse it and bring it into action. So I'm happy to propose it and ask for your support today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Any other members? Andrew, I think you've heard it. Yeah.
Only I have Andrew Davis sends her apologies today because she's chairman of the committee that runs it. She completely endorses this and wishes it to be known that she supports it.
That's excellent news. No, thank you for that. Thank you for bringing that message along. No, yeah, no. Simon, and then I'll come to you, Dan. Yeah.
Leader, a little advice from Maria, please. Do I need to declare that I am a farmer in order to participate? Am I okay?
You're okay.
Thank you very much.
Dan.
Thank you, leader. So in another place I sit on for this county council, I sit on the National Park Authority for Dartmoor National Park. So I know only too well what an enormous amount of work will have been undertaken by officers at Exmoor and by members of Exmoor Authority to get the document that we see now to this state. So I don't need to scrutinize it because I'm reassured that the Park Authority members at Exmoor will have done exactly that. It is, it is an excellent document. It's entirely necessary for their day to day existence. And as such, I'm happy to take an endorsement from Cabinet Davis and know that we will have a really excellent document in front of us.
No, thank you. Right. So Jackie's proposed it. Can I have a second up for that? Dan, happy to second it. So all those in favor of the recommendations, please show. That's great. Sorry, Michael, I didn't come to. Did you want to say anything on it or?
Well, I was just going to say I sit next to Dan and so I appreciate how much work goes into all of this. And I think that the people who would have put this plan together will have put tremendous amount of effort into it. So obviously I would, I would hope that everybody would support it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. Well, it's been proposed and seconded. All in favor, please show. Yeah, that's unanimous. Let's make school keep clear markings enforceable. That.
Sorry. Thank you, leader. So this agenda item comes from a request at East Devon Hattock. You will see that in the background and introduction. And it was requested that cabinet be asked to explore options to make school keep clear restrictions mandatory outside all Devon schools by default, in line with the council's strategic priority of being ambitious for its young people. You will see that the recommendation is that we would note work to date to ensure restrictions at schools are enforceable where required and agree that future requests for school keep clear markings continue to be dealt with in the annual review of restrictions undertaken in the annual Hattock waiting restriction program. So what we're basically saying is, is that we are, the cabinet recommendation is that we are content with the status quo. Where they're requested, we will absolutely put them in place, but there isn't a cabinet recommendation for an appetite to enforce where they haven't been asked. And I think that would be unduly arbitrary in the sense that we have a system where schools have traffic and travel management plans and they can ask for what they need and when they, when they ask for what they need and when Hattocks ask for what they need, they can be delivered. You will also note that C and D speak to your particular desire towards town and parish protocol whereby C says that where communities or schools wish for school keep clear markets be upgraded as a priority, where there is a self fund ability, the authority will work with them to progress this. And you will also note that we will add into the new self delivery guide this section as well to make it clear that this is possible. So I think there is a middle ground here. It isn't providing exactly what Hattock has requested, but I think it makes it clear what can be done. As such, I would ask cabinet to support it.
Thank you, Dan. Members, Jackie, sorry, Meg, did you want to come in?
Okay. Clarify something which is on page 256 and it's paragraph 3.2. There are, it's perfect, it's correct as it sounds, but I would prefer it that if it was noted that 3.2 is probably better written as where these markings are accompanied by a sign, these markings are enforceable by a police officer. So I just think there's a little bit missing around that particular paragraph and apologies for that. I just think that makes the report clearer.
No, thank you, Dan. I assume we can add that to the report or a minutes? Yeah, thank you. So yeah, that's okay. Jackie.
Thank you. I don't know how many fellow councillors have stood outside schools and watched parents dropping off kids for their morning school or picking them up in the evening. But it's, sometimes it's surprising to think that these people are parents and carers because they don't seem to remember that they're actually going to a school where there's lots of children. They drop off their children in the middle of the road. They drop them off on the school markings. It's absolutely what's really going on at schools. And I think this is really important part to actually have a safe area around. I've seen Meg laughing. See, it's a safe area around the school, just so that it's somewhere that at least you can see where these poor little ones who are often lower than the height of his car and that can, I can't otherwise be seen, that there's actually somewhere that's clear and hopefully encourage parents to sort of leave their cars a bit further away and maybe walk the last few feet, whatever. But it's certainly a really important step in making our school areas safer. And I know that school streets is something that, you know, is part of the safer streets that we need to be working towards. And this is just one of the things. So having them enforceable is really important because if we've got, you know, members of the police force on site, they can just, you know, wave they want a little bit for this. Thank you.
No, thank you, Jackie. Andrew, do you want to?
Well, only to, I think it's really important to have these safe areas around schools. But of course, the important thing is to make sure they are enforced. There's no point having markings down, whether it's enforced by the police or by our own parking enforcement. Actually being forced to find out that it's free for all. I've got the same problems in my area, free for all, no enforcement. So that's all I'd say. Get it enforced as well. I know we used to have a hit squad that went around, didn't we? Problems with schools. That's still the case.
Then I, Meg may be able to answer that.
Yeah, we can target areas as we, you know, we, once we know about them and not clearly, we often get feedback from schools on road safety initiatives that really we need to work with schools on. It's, it's another area where educate the child and the parent may become educated, picking up on Council Hodgson's earlier point.
Thank you, Meg. Michael?
Fortunately, I have to say something on this. You're so right, Jackie. I just, it's an absolute nightmare. The number of parish councillors I go around to with schools. And what you're trying to do is teach people how to be considerate for other people. I don't know whether it's the generation, I really don't know. The fact is, is the schools don't want to get involved because they know it causes problems with other parents. Parents don't want to get involved because it causes problems. And I don't really think it's enforceable by an outside force. I think it really needs to come from the children and the school to tell their parents to behave correctly and think of other people. Very quickly, I was at a parish council meeting a little while ago and one of them said, oh, it's not our responsibility. And I said, yeah, it's not your responsibility, but you are responsible for your community. And how are you going to explain how little Johnny got crushed between two cars? Even if you can't do anything, you've got to look as if you're doing something. So I absolutely hope whatever you find to do to make this better, it's an absolute pain and we don't want to lose children. They're expensive to replace. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, then I'll come to you, Richard.
I was just wondering if we can encourage schools to come forward where they have got serious problems. Do we do that already? It would be great to, like where there are real concerns and they've tried, I think they can, it's not working to make sure it's enforced.
So yes, we do respond to concerns from schools and we also have got an officer who can actually go out and talk to schools and offer them support and advice as well as to what we can do. And we do work with the police closely on these issues as well, particularly around some form of activities around schools.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Meg. Richard, then I'll come back to you, Jackie.
Thank you, leader. Yeah, I totally agree what's been said and especially from Michael on that. It's everyone's responsibility really to make sure the walk to school is as safe as possible. And if I can, with my hat on at Teenbridge District Council, what we do with our car parks close to those schools is it's free for a period in the morning, preschool and after school, so that parents can park in the car park free and walk to school from that car park safely and to that school. And that happens in my area in Chudley and other areas as well. But we need to all work together and make sure that.
Richard, thank you. Jackie, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we do, we've got a very helpful road safety team here at Devon County Council who, the work I've done with some schools are able to give templates out for green school travel plans. And this would be an ideal place to put some of that information in as well to help, you know, a bit of self help that the schools can apply themselves because they probably wouldn't realize it. So that's somewhere it could also sit. So any fellow cabinet members who have perhaps done this before, it's really useful and you can work with the school then to actually help them to identify and they work with the parents. It's, it's a good process actually. So this is a good seat for it.
No, thank you, Jackie. Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you. While we're having, while we're having a wider conversation around, around, you know, travel to school. I was at a Vision Zero meeting yesterday with Mr. Holland, who's our deputy director. I'm planning in Meg's department. And we've actually, his team have secured money from Vision Zero for continuing trials around walkability. So walkability is the system in the community, primary school children are taught how to ride their bicycles safely. Well, the walkability program is, as it suggests, is a similar scheme around safe walking to and from a school around there. So there is a lot of work being done where we can to do exactly what's been suggested to educate the child or there will be certainly through these trials, educate the child and therefore the parent will be educated as a consequence. So I think we are doing our bits in terms of education as well. This is a twin pronged attack. You know, you're absolutely right. You can't just stick. There's got to be carrot as well. So our stick would be the enforcement. Council Lebed is quite right. That only works when it is enforced. But at the same time, we are working really well, I think. And, you know, I was really pleased yesterday to see the Vision Zero partnership wanting to support those pilots going out into towns within Devon County. They've already been trials in Plymouth, I believe, and possibly in Torbay as well, but it's going further afield now and that will be a really good thing in terms of the education process.
No, that's good. Simon.
Thank you, leader. Anything we can do to alleviate risk, the younger members of society is, is to be fully supported. And I think also in the dim and distant past, when for a decade I was a school governor and stretching the point. And I think Dan's given us the leeway to be able to do that. I was a big advocate publicly showing the population the benefits of what we called a walking bus, which was pupils walking to school minus the motor car, but with the parents and safely supervised, all very well and good in very rural parishes that have pain, pavements, but a little bit of a pain in the neck for people if you don't have paving. Just an observation. Thank you, leader.
No, thank you, Simon. Any more? No. In which case, Dan, are you happy to?
Yes, leader, happy to propose recommendations. Does Billy already pay?
Yeah, can I have a second up for that, please? Richard, thank you. All those in favor? See, that's unanimous. Excellent. Agenda item 15. So this is the garden waste contract extensions. Jackie, over to you.
Thank you. So this is a proposal to just enable us to keep going with our garden waste contracts. There's a transition coming up because the, the Bickley Ball operations are closing. And so we're maybe away from there to put it all towards, I can't remember which, which the other one is actually, I'm sorry. But it's just basically being able to just move, move the garden waste composting and essentially keeping it local where it actually goes to. So this is, it's just funding to allow that to happen. We do need this garden waste contracts to continue. It's a well supported situation that is managed by the district councils. And so, but we are in charge of where the contract compost goes. So they move, they take the compost, there's just the green waste, the cuttings that go into the brown bins and they end up turning it, being turned into compost that can be put back on the, on the land for farms. So I ask you to support the proposal.
Thank you, Jackie. Any comments? No, Michael? No. I, just one thing I'd like to ask, where, Meg, you may be able to answer this. Where does, where would this sit with the proposed local government reorganization? You know?
So our contracts usually have novation clause, well, they do have novation clauses in them to allow the novation of the contracts to whoever the new authority would be, because whoever the new authority is, they will still need to dispose of this waste.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if that's reassuring or not. Yeah. It should be. Okay, good. You're assured, excellent. Did, who was that? Simon, sorry, Simon.
Thank you, leader. I have a very quick question and it may have escaped my attention, but I don't think it has. It talks about 65,000 tonnes per annum. Garden waste are composted at a cost of 2.7 million per annum. Do we see any recompense from that expenditure, i.e. the selling of the material?
Two percent of that cost overall.
Members, any other comments? Jackie, you wanted to come?
I could just make reference to my portfolio at Southampton District Council, which is the community composting project, which I would recommend to anybody to start talking to their communities if they want to set up community composting. It's not, it's not that cheap to set up. You need a number of, quite a bundle of volunteers and you need to go through a planning process. But once it's there, it's absolutely brilliant for local people. So it saves people having to invest in the brown bin. And it also means that people can actually do things as a community and they can have their free compost, which saves all those plastic bags coming from your local garden centre because people just go and collect a bin full of lovely compost from their local site. So that's the way forward if you really want to save money at the local level. And it's been well taken up in Southampton. We've got a good model if you want to see how it works.
Andrew?
Can I just ask a question? Is this a statutory requirement that actually, does the council have to do? Could it actually save several million pounds by not doing it?
We have a statutory duty to dispose of the waste that is collected, whether that's through our household waste recycling centres or through the district councils.
Do we have a statutory race to do garden waste?
Garden waste is defined as being within the household waste category. So yes, we do.
Michael?
The only problem I think is with when the idea of having a village where composting is done is absolutely fine. Problem is, is that grass, people have a tendency to put so many poisons on it, to get rid of weeds, moss, goodness knows what else. And I've never been tempted to get compost from any large establishment that has so much coming in. And I think a lot of gardeners just kind of look at it and say, well, no. But in the village, you know that most people don't put poison on, on their plants because the simple reason is we consider the insects. So I think, I think we need to encourage the local community to have better composting of local waste of, from the garden. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Michael. I mean, and I'd say Jackie's doing a fantastic job at Southampton, encouraging the uptake of local community composting sites. The county, of course, used to do and still does. There's a, we pay some, we pay some money, don't we, as a county to support local compost, community composting sites? I think we do, don't we? Or has that been totally, I know it was reduced, I think.
It was, it was, it was stopped, I think about 2018, 17, 18. I mean, because there was, there was about 60 around the county, but it's, but a lot of those, some of those have carried on. And some of those enthusiasts have kind of come back on and do it more locally.
I just, Jackie, I wonder if you'd like to put in a further recommendation there around the, is that around the community? I think there's obviously a lot of support around here, you know, across. here, you know, across, across the council. So it might be useful just to have something there.
So would it be a point B, recognise the value of community composting projects that are, that can be supported and save, save the council's resources and support the local carbon footprint being reduced?
And I think we can put that in as part of your Cabinet member report only as well. So we say the Cabinet member supports.
Yeah, absolutely.
So yeah, we can work some wording around that to support the approach. But yes, quite right, we'll write in around council resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Simon?
Thank you, Leader. I think it's incumbent on me to dispel the myth that a lot of poisonous material is composted as a result of the sprays, et cetera, the use of, obviously, when we're part of the European Union, most of the noxious chemicals were used in the 60s and 70s. And we've all seen the televisual impact of Agent Orange 245T and all the rest of it. They are no longer usable. And we now actually adhere to a very strict code of practice. And a lot of the chemicals that gardening, gardeners would use and householders would use are very, very tame in comparison to what is the common conception based on past usages. Just, just for a balance of it. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, Simon. Jackie?
So if I could just come back, I wouldn't include Roundup as a safe chemical. I know that's widely used. So just, just saying.
Okay, no, good. All right, we'll just leave that there. Maybe differing views around the table, but it's not as bad as it was. I think we could probably all agree on that. Anyway, so Jackie, you've got a recommendation A there, and a further one of B, which is basically, you know, endorses and encourages community composting. Yeah, so Maria's going to just read out the words, some words.
So, so B would be that the Cabinet recognises a value of community composting projects in leading ways, sorry, reducing waste and carbon reduction. And that was Cabinet member will promote and encourage and support the scheme where appropriate.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jackie, so you happy to move those two recommendations now? And do I have a seconder? Dan, seconded. All in favour, please show. Lovely, thank you. Right. Agenda item 16, Local Get Britain Working Plan. Simon, over to you.
Leader, thank you very much indeed. Could I, before I start, thank the officers for the rapidity in which this report has taken place in the cohesive nature and operating with the two other authorities in order to bring it forward. And I congratulate them on that and the confines of the timeframe that they operated in. In essence, it does what it says on the tin. And the Get Devon Plymouth and Torbay Working Plan is our formal local response to the government's Get Britain Working White Paper. Every upper-tier area must produce one by September, setting out how local partners will reduce economic inactivity, improve job quality and aspiration, and integrate employment, skills and health provision. The plan has been co-produced, as we said, by the three upper-tier authorities, the Integrated Care Board, DWP, employers, training providers and the voluntary sector. It builds on existing strategies such as the Adult Skills Fund pilot and Brighter Futures, and reflects extensive consultation with partners. The evidence shows 145,000 working-age residents across the area are economically inactive. That's between 1/6th and 1/7th of the population of Devon. Long-term health conditions, care, responsibilities, low pay, rural and coastal isolation, weak transport links are key barriers preventing people from accessing work or training. At the same time, employers face major skills shortages, for example, in health, construction, agriculture, marine defence and digital sectors, and new investments in green energy defence infrastructure. And advancing manufacturing creates significant opportunities if residents can be linked into the right training and pathways. The plan, as you can see, sets out six priorities: tackling health barriers to work, supporting young people into sustained careers, improving job quality and reducing in-work poverty, enabling unpaid carers back to work, and addressing labour shortages and reducing place-based inequalities across rural coastal and urban communities. Delivery will begin with pilots in Torbay, Ilfracombe and Nunabbot, and these will test integrated local models, bringing together health, employment, skills and housing support. Successful approaches then are scaled across the wider area. Early actions include developing a local youth guarantee, so that young persons have a pathway to education, training and employment, rolling out the Connect to Work Programme, linking health and employment services and piloting a local jobs charter with employers, and embedding digital inclusion and carer-friendly employment options across all programmes. Governance will be through a new Get Britain Working Partnership Board, co-chaired by local government, DWP, employers, voluntary sector and residents with lived experience will play a formal role to ensure delivery remains locally driven and accountable. Initial funding will come from existing resources, including the Adult Skills Fund, Connect to Work and DWP programmes. The plan will position the area for long-term devolution deals and additional national investment. The next steps are a Cabinet approve and form, approve and formal submission to government in September, mobilising our local pilots this autumn, early delivery through 2026 and a full strategy refresh later in 2026 to enable learning and secure futures of investment. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to promote the recommendation when appropriate. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, Simon. Members, any questions, queries? Phil, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to it?
No, as Councilor Cliss has said, this is one where we've been asked to produce it at absolutely hectic pace. They gave us eight weeks across three areas and across basically 50 to 60 statutory partners to get this one done. I think where we've got to has been a fairly heroic effort and happy to answer questions. It does, though, and I think we have to stress this, this is about delivering with the resources that we've actually got. This isn't about new activity. This is really about reminding government that we are doing some of this stuff. But yeah, happy to answer questions if members have got them.
Dan?
Well, not, not, well, it might be a question in the end, but it starts off as being, well, I mean, it is an heroic effort. Because, I mean, bullet points alone, you know, if you work through the report on each of the six priorities, you know, what our approach will be is Herculean in itself. And then when you actually, if you turn on page 16 of the report, which is page 300 on our computers, if you're following it, from fragmentation to integration, I mean, just those five bullet points alone, you know, we will establish a core delivery architecture with both place-based and thematic working groups. We will align local and national provision through shared planning and joint commissioning. We will embed employment outcomes into health skills and community services with integrated data sharing to improve coordination. We will move forward with a single joined-up governance approach, bringing together the local authorities, ICB and wider partners, and we'll seek to use existing delivery footprints. Good luck. No, I mean that genuinely, because, I mean, that is an incredible challenge.
And I think you're absolutely right, Councillor Thomas. I mean, the discussions that we've been having around the partnership, first off, I would say this is a challenge that governments say in every area. So we're in a place at the moment where the way that the Get Britain Working White Paper has been written is it expects us over the next three to four years as areas to try and deliver some of this. It is an absolute task. I mean, there is no denying it. I mean, the benefit I think we've got around some of this is that some of these things are already in train. We're already working on some of them. So the work with the ICB, the work with DWP, the work with some of the district councils, with the three unitaries, the three, sorry, two unitaries, one upper-tier. We have been working together now for about 12 months on some of these ambitions and the governance and other things. The combined authority, for all its newness, is providing a bit of a structure for us to work together as well, which is helping. We're about to get, members will remember, six million, seven million pounds a year to deliver some of this as well. So that's the Connect to Work Programme, plus a couple of other schemes that are coming up on the right rails. But I don't think any of us should underestimate how much government wants us to move on this. Just to put it into context, they want us to move from 78% on economic activity to over 80%. 2% doesn't sound like a lot, but that means moving 30 to 40,000 individuals back into work. That's a lot of people. So, you know, we are, we are aware.
Leader, can I just, can I just come back? Thank you. Just, you know, just, just by way of emphasising, you know, how I appreciate the importance. I mean, under, under health and work, you know, one of the approaches is to work with employers to create flexible roles and recruit from health-affected cohorts, including midlife career changes. I mean, that is, that's incredibly important. But that piece of work alone, you know, and then if you go into the, if you go into the young people and need something that very much aligns with our strategic ambitions, you know, strengthen, strengthen tracking outreach and alternative provision for those at risk. Again, absolutely key, Leader. But those six words, massive, the amount of, I just think Cabinet colleagues should, should fully appreciate that this is a mammoth task.
No, thank, thank you, Dan. I think you're absolutely right. Andrew, did you want to come in? And then I'll come to you, Jackie.
Only it's got admirable aims, hasn't it? Especially with the needs of young people, getting them to work. The thing is, it's a great idea. But yet again, as you say, there's no money, the government said, get on and do all this. So by the way, you're on your own. It is difficult, isn't it, just doing this? Can I just ask, so some of the money we're getting to the strategic authority, can some of it be given to this? Can we employ extra staff? I mean, can we?
Yeah. So the funds that are coming through the combined authority at the moment, and actually, members around the room have signed off some of these already. So the Connect to Work Programme, absolutely, it's 23 million pounds spread across the three areas. We are the delivery body for that, so that we're the accountable body, and it can be used absolutely for the contents of this. Adult Skills Fund, so that's the training side. Government have made it very clear and DFE have worked with DWP on it, that we can use it for some of this. So we're working on that and looking at how we align it, and we can employ staff and other things with that which we're looking at. ICB, interestingly, and this is a question that's come up a lot because of the state of the finances of the NHS, ICB has got some funding flexibility in-house as well around some of this. So we're trying to hold them to account on spending that. So I think that's very important that we get there. And then there are a couple of other things which may come through budget, which we're just waiting for. You may have seen in the press, there's been discussions about a youth guarantee of some description for the whole country and some other programmes. We're waiting to see what that funding looks like, but that will fall into this as well, which is one of the reasons why I think they want it for September 1st, because they want us to see what we're doing. And then there'll be announcements.
Thank you. Jackie?
Thank you. I think the cutbacks that we've experienced since austerity obviously has had a massive, massive impact on employment in the county. I mean, we lost, what did we lose? About a third of our staff here. District councils lost, I know Southham's lost 24% of its staff. Those are really good jobs. They were good jobs that had recruitment opportunities and, you know, advancement through the process, good training. And, I mean, the public authorities have often been some of the best employers, particularly in rural areas and including the NHS as well, and other big areas. You know, youth workers, we've lost all of our youth workers. Because there's loads of skilled jobs. It's really hard to rebuild on a lot of that, especially now we're being asked to rebuild without that support within the local authority to actually sort of be part of it and a good model for it as well. However, we do have really good resources here. And I think for me, there's a really good opportunity for people like DEFRA to step up and look at working with the farming community, to sort of work with farm, because what is it, the average age of a farmer is still about 62 or something. And, you know, younger people are not so inclined to go into the farming because things like Seal Hayne and Newton Abbott, which was a fantastic agricultural college, and others have been lost. So there's not that enthusiasm, not just to work in farming business as usual, but actually farming in terms of new products, brand Devon, et cetera, like that, that could really lift a lot of our food production. Because we have got a really good, good profile here, you know, a good record, you know, what would you call, you know, whatever. It's just, it's just, it's recognised as having good quality food, lots of organic food and things like that, which is a good start in terms of supporting the local economy. But I do welcome this. I mean, it's something that gets us kickstarted, if you like. But actually, I think starting to look at what the vision might be in some of this might be really helpful, and start picking out some streams that we could work towards to rebuild. And certainly, I think that one thing that we need to recognise as part of this, of course, is the biggest, biggest challenge really is actually affordable, genuinely affordable housing, you know, for people who want to work here. Because the difference between the cost of housing and the amount you might get in a rural, rural job is, 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 almost doesn't, doesn't work. And I've worked with a lot of young people who say they can't afford to work here. They, you know, they have to go from the area. So if we can sort of, you know, reinvest in our younger, younger people, and many of whom have seemed to be out of work, I think that's a really good point. But I think we need to know where we're going with it. And I hate to think that any more money was going into the free port, to be honest, because I think that's just been, for me, a sinkhole that hasn't really delivered, where I think it could, that money that could have come in, that's gone through this county and through the district councils too. So that's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, yeah, Michael, and then I'll come to you, Simon.
I was privileged to see some of this and some of the thought that was going into it. And I must admit, I was impressed, and I'm not easily impressed. I think this was a knock-on on so many different areas. And I think what I took away from it, sorry, this is not a question, but what I took away from it was the optimism drive. And it was also looking further into the future. I think, and it's really good that it's something we can be proud of, so more power to you. And I hope you find the money that you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Simon, then I'll come to you. Cheryl?
Thank you, Leader. I'll resist any frivolous comment about Michael being unimpressed or not easily impressed. There's a good farmer in everyone. No, I won't say that. I think also, just elaborating a little bit on what Jackie was saying around, as followed on by the CCA Housing Group, which I chaired the meeting in Barnstable last week, where we're not the talking shop, we're actually moving forward very, very, it was really well represented by both council, district council leads and, and officers. It's crucial on the back of Lord Richard Best's report of last autumn, that we follow through on those recommendations. But also interesting, I didn't point out, I've just looked at my notes, that this dovetails very in, dovetails really well in with the significant parts of Agenda Item 9 and 11 on this morning. Thank you.
No, thank you, Simon. Cheryl?
Just wanted to highlight the problems with public transport, particularly for rural areas, so have my rural affairs hat on. And we're meeting, we've already met with the Managing Director of Stagecoach, myself, Councillor Hodgson and James. And again, Peter, I'm from Stagecoach, because rural transport is a huge barrier. And I know it's mentioned within the report, but it's not, it comes within a priority, but it's not sort of highlighted in there. So it's that need to keep lobbying and for all of this, really, the need to keep lobbying. And again, broadband as well. The poor broadband that we have in rural areas is really holding, holding people back. And we can't deliver on everything that we want to if we haven't got, got that in place. So just a reminder. And we are lobbying, but we need to, yeah, work really hard to emphasise it.
Yeah, no. And thank you, Cheryl. Thank you for all the work you're doing on that and Jackie around transport and then particularly around broadband, Cheryl. Right, I've just got a couple of quick questions, if I may, Phil. One of them was, on 3.7, you've got the, the key measures. I just wonder how, how those might be reported. I mean, I agree with them. Actually, you know, those are the key measures. What's baseline, when are we going to get reports? How do we know if we're succeeding or not? Well, obviously from the key measures, but yeah.
Luckily, some of them overlap, actually, with the new local government framework, which is about to come into place around our KPIs. So NEET's, the inactivity rate, some of the growth around apprenticeships. What we'll do is, so for the performance and partnerships tracking, which we bring back to Cabinet, and obviously What we'll do is, so for the performance and partnerships tracking, which we bring back to Cabinet and obviously we do on a quarterly basis. Those five core metrics will build into the performance and partnerships core metrics, because there is so much overlap there. We need to do that anyway, because the ICB and the other partners want the same and we need some consistency about reporting back to members on how we're achieving. The core metrics, just to, just to give you a feel is, so economic activity is the NOMIS metric, it's the ONS metric that we use around economic activity. It's measured on a monthly basis. NEAT rate, we've got a capture team internally where we do NEAT tracking, so we can bring that back. We also track as part of that all of the subcategories, so care leavers, those with sends, those are in youth justice. We have got a sector based apprenticeship set of stats that actually we manage now on behalf of the CCA, so we can bring that back. And the one about improved progression, actually wages and work, it's monitored on monthly basis through the, it will become part of our regular tracking. I mean, this is the work for the next four to five years really now. So yeah.
That's, that's good to hear. And my other, my final point was around, I think, I heard you mention something about, does it connect to work, that's six point seven minutes? Is that new money or is it just money that we got used to get before, but we can actually choose how we spend it now?
So no, this isn't, this is actually a new programme, so it's a, it's an interesting one. It used to be part of the Work and Health Programme, which was done on a national contracting basis, but we never got as much as we're about to get. Government have basically doubled the Work and Health Programme local element and we as local authorities are going to control it as opposed to it being nationally contracted. So that will start, actually, business plan is just being approved this week. And we're hoping to be in a position to start delivering that from September, October. We have local teams that are going to be embedded in every area of the county, in Torbay and in Plymouth. And you'll start to see that. It's quite ambitious. So it's two thousand individuals we have to work with a year. And which includes the cohort that we've got here. And that will be a big bit of business. Five years guaranteed funding for it though, which has never happened to us before. So it's a big change.
Okay, that's, that sounds good. Right. Members, any, any more, for any more on that? So Simon, are you happy to propose the recommendations?
Leader, I am, yes.
Yeah, and do a seconder. Jackie, thank you. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's unanimous. Agenda item seventeen, it's, it's you again, Simon. Governance to support strategically oversee organisational change and transformation. Nice catchy title.
I'm, I'm, leader, thank you. I'm really pleased you read that out. I can go straight into my preface without being tongue tied and stumbling. Right, yes, of course. Leader and Cabinet, I'm delighted to present this report. Sets out our new governance arrangements to provide an oversight and assurance on council's key transformation projects. The report is presented to Cabinet for the information rather than as a key decision. And the Strategic Change and Transformation Board, I knew I'd strike. This month and will be chaired by Matthew Jones as Director of the Transformation and Business Services, focusing on, focusing on five priority areas over the next twelve months. As part of the work, the project, programme and project management resource will be brought together from across the organisation. And this will help ensure a consistent approach across council wide programmes. And you'll see on page three nine, sorry, three nine one, that those five key areas are integrated adult, social care, growing futures, joint adult and children's systems, replacement, JAKs, short and special educational needs and disabilities, send and modernising systems, including digital. There was some offline conversation around Cabinet inclusion. I think personally, and this isn't part of any, any recommendation, but it is to note would be a little difficult, it's operational and strategical, for actually a designated Cabinet role to be included. But I think that committee would welcome a Cabinet member as, or Cabinet members, plural, purely for an observational process, because you may well at Cabinet be compromised if you were part of that group. Thank you.
Leader, is that you volunteering, Simon?
I'm, I'm struggling to remember who, who, who came up with the famous line in a, in a comedy sketch, in for me, you've got it in for me. Thank you, Leader.
Members, any, any more comments? Yeah. Just, Donna's want to say something.
Yeah, I think it's really important to note that in building into strategic plan that these five priorities will have a significant impact on the improvement journey for children's services. You know, the integrated adult social care work is key for what we do in communities and localities, but for the transitions from children to adults, it will have a significant impact. And it's good to see that a lot of the work that's in here is recognising that member feedback in the last few years through scrutiny has really put a laser focus on transitions. So I think it's important to note, you know, your previous member colleagues have outlined the need to join the dots across the council. And this is what all these projects do. Every single project requires a whole council approach to make it successful. And, you know, there are really important timelines here. For example, the system replacement, it's absolutely critical that we deliver that in twenty twenty six and that, that's a big task. I think it's important for any staff and colleagues to hear today that, you know, frontline staff have very much saw replacement systems. It was fantastic to note recently that our financial placement system, which was a big, first big cog in that wheel, has now been recognised for innovation and is at the final, and shortlisting national awards. So this, this a follow on, follow on from the capability that we built within the council to basically bring the council together to deliver at pace. But I think it is important to note that it does require everybody to work together and our partners in this space as well. Because often, recently, some of the LGR work, where we have worked closely with NHS and district colleagues and other tiers, there's a lot of data that is actually across our peninsula that is really important because our, our families don't all live in the same place all the time and the crossover across the peninsula for services. So I think it's just important to note that the backdrop to this is significant work with partners and it's ongoing. And that's why we need your support, members in that line of site, so that if any of that does get stuck, that you can support us in moving that forward. So I think it's an important one and that's why, you know, it needs to be at Cabinet. And clearly, some of those programmes will link into scrutiny at different points as well and we, we welcome that too.
No, thank you, Donna. Absolutely. Matthew.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think helpful just to highlight to Cabinet members, under three point two, we've talked about the recommendations in audit reports and I want to be explicit about the recommendation that our statutory auditors set out last year relating to value for money. So they were explicit in their recommendations. This has got to link very closely to financial sustainability. And they talked about the council wide oversight and scrutiny across our transformation programmes. So the transformation programmes that councillor Cliss has helpfully set out, that are in the report, you know, significant work. Those programmes and projects are underway. This is about bringing that together and ensuring we make that link with value for money. Thank you.
No, thank you, Matthew. Paul. Yeah, Julian.
All right. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Simon, very much for that. This is incredibly welcome because we all know how difficult it is not to work in silos. And this is work I know that a number of the district councils have focused on as well. You know, the road's good intentions and all of that. You need, you do need systems to be replaced and put in place because you can often find a single point of failure around one incredibly valuable employee who, you know, best man in the world goes off for three months or something. And somebody looks in a document and thinks, well, who's, who's backing me up here? Where does this now go? So we often talk, don't we, about things in councils being living documents? And something like this, I think is very helpful in bringing everybody together and making sure. And I take Matthew's point, this is also in effect a requirement as well of the auditors and that, that is important, that sort of gives us on. I think it's part of the emerging and evolving new culture of this council. So I really welcome it. Thank you, Simon. Thank you, Matthew.
And thank you, Paul. Any more, Andrew? Oh no, sorry, Julian, yeah.
Thank you, Leader. I just wanted to reinforce what the chief executive said about the importance of the replacement of the system, both for children and adults, and important that is. I think, I suppose what I would add is that some of the concerns previously from the Department for Education is the pace of change in Devon. So it's very important that we deliver the, these change programmes at the appropriate pace. And because clearly, you know, we're subject to DFE statutory guidance at the moment and statutory notice. And they will continue to review the programmes as linked to our outcomes at pace. So it's important to understand that context to this programme.
Thank you. Andrew, Michael, okay. So Simon, happy to propose the recommendations?
I, I suppose what I have to do is to recommend to Cabinet to note one point one A and one point one B. Does, am I right, Maria? Thank you.
Yes.
Well done. Right. And can I have a seconder? Paul, happy to second it. And all those in favour, please show. Thank you. Agenda item eighteen, Southampton's Hattock.
Yeah, Leader, thank you. Members, you'll need to go back to the, the agenda part of your, your papers for this because all the information is in the, is another of the matter referred in the agenda back. Item eighteen on the agenda list. So just a bit of background, this is a request from Southampton's Highways and Traffic Orders Committee. For the record, I wasn't actually at that Hattock. That was back in the halcyon days when I still had time to be a school teacher as well as a councillor. So the Chair, who is here and part of this Cabinet, but I'll, I'll deal with this as it's only paper, my name, based on diversion items, the matter of ongoing difficulties caused by footways. So basically, the committee noted that there are restrictions in other parts of the UK, principally in London, to prevent footway obstruction. And they noted that we'd responded to a government consultation back in two thousand and twenty, but they hadn't heard anything more. So they wanted Cabinet to make further representation, representations to government to strengthen restrictions and legislation on footway obstruction. So the, the recommendation that Cabinet's being asked to approve today is in five parts. The first is to note that pavement parking does cause significant problems, particularly for people with disabilities, older people and families with children prams. But also moreover, the fact that parked vehicles themselves can cause significant damage to footway services, often resulting in the need for costly repairs. So there are two issues here. There is the obvious obstruction issue, particularly for more, more vulnerable residents. But there is also the damage being done to footways and the bill that therefore comes back to the county. So then little C is welcoming the DFT consultation, but noting that there's been no response provided by the government yet, despite the fifteen thousand responses it received. D noting that we are a member of parking and traffic regulations outside of London and that organisation is actively engaged with the DFT and regularly raises the desire of its members for change. And finally, that the Cabinet through me as your member on patrol will, will, will make further representations, highlighting the need for forward movement on legislation that will assist all local authorities in tackling pavement parking. So what we're basically saying to, to Hattock is, we, we agree with you, but we don't have the power to do anything. We have to ask through patrol, we have to ask the government to change our legislation to outlaw pavement parking that we can then enforce, which we can't currently do. Clearly, there is a police enforcement issue. Potentially, but that is very much a police matter. We don't have any powers ourselves at this stage.
Okay, no, thank you for that. Very clear. And I think, I mean, Michael's very much ties in with Neil's motion that came to full council, actually, about pavement parking. So, yeah, and I think we can concur.
Yeah, I believe that's, that has been referred to Cabinet, hasn't it? So that's.
Yeah, that will come back. We'll give us another bite of the cherry on that one.
But, but the, but without wishing to predetermine what will come back to Cabinet, I mean, the, the situation is the situation. What I've just described is basically where we are legally. We, you know, it is something that we need the government to, to rectify.
Okay, and Andrew?
I was going to say this has been knocking around for years, hasn't it? Comes up regularly about pavement parking. I don't understand why the government hasn't made a decision. So it's two governments now, isn't it? The only thing I would add, I'm surprised you're not writing to MPs as well, because maybe they can put some pressure on the government. Get a result or at least find out why it's stalled at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could do that as well.
Happy to do that, Leader.
Yeah, yeah, we could just slight amendment there. So lobby government and our local MPs to take the fight to them. But it does, I mean, because my understanding is, is that they do it in Scotland, isn't it? It's up to the local authorities to, if they want to, they can ban pavement parking.
We used to have a bylaw in Exeter that prevented pavement parking, but I'm sure what happened to that bylaw disappeared at some point.
Right, and Michael?
Personally, I can understand why people want to keep out of this. It's so contentious. You know, it's again, it's, it's people not behaving well. Everybody with prams, blind, any difficulties at all. It's so inconsiderate, but the fact is, is that I'm, I'm glad it's not us.
Be careful, it might be suit, because what, because what Scotland did is they said, no, because it'll be the Hattock that does it. So, yeah. Anyway, you can't get out of it that easily. No. Jackie.
The only thing I would say is, thank you. Yeah, I actually chair the Southampton's Hattock now as of this meeting. And one of the things that's come, that came up in the kind of what the, what the committee were talking about included some of these enormous private owned waste bins that are sitting outside shops, particularly in sort of high streets. So for example, Tottenham was used as the example because it was where the Hattock was. And I mean, there's one shop that's got sort of five waste bins outside, you know, these different companies that, that's, you know, belonging to the neighbouring shops. And so the walkway, the very nice, otherwise pleasant walkway is completely filled with, you don't even know what's in these bins. I mean, they could even be fire hazards because they're locked and they could even be very empty. So just a complete waste of space. But it's, so it was really looking at the fact that, I mean, in the past, I've tried to get highways officers to say that these are obstructions. And it's like, because they still leave about a metre for people to get past, it's okay. But actually, it's not really okay for shops to sort of not, not have to provide space to keep their waste stored, you know, and put it out on a certain day, but just to leave it on the street all week in these big bins. So that's a slight element that's missing from the recommendation. But nevertheless, at this stage, I would say that in terms of what we're looking at, we're focusing on the, on the pavement parking. Which again, just to point out, there's an awful lot of very narrow pavements. So actually it can be completely obstructive to anybody getting through. And I've seen people have to walk out into the road on quite busy streets because there's people parked all over. And there's some companies that do it, where, you know, they've got people just queuing up with their cars if they're sort of a tire shop or something. And just not noticing that people have to walk, walk out into the main A road to get past a vehicle that's just waiting to be looked at. So I think this is a really important thing. And I think it's, yeah, we just focus on this, but maybe we could actually as local authorities, look at what's going on with the waste companies that are sort of happily putting their private bins all over the pavements too.
No, thanks for that, Jackie. I'm, I'm just wondering, with Neil's motion that's been referred to Cabinet, perhaps we could pick up the, the waste bins blocking pavements as well? If we could do that, that'd be great.
More than happy to do that. And I'd welcome the opportunity to have a little bit of time to think about that and where the responsibilities and inequalities lie. So that'd be really useful.
All right, good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Jackie.
Could I just ask a question? Because again, in Exeter, I believe that if A boards are obstructing pavements, we have the powers to remove them. So we must have some powers already.
So I was going to say that we're opening up a totally different subject area here. And that is about, not about vehicles parking on the highway, but general obstructions on footways. We do have a policy and I'm wondering whether or not we need to kind of look at that policy and see if we want to change it. So the policy was tried to be pragmatic in identifying that some premises do not have alternative ways of either storing goods or equally be advertising boards on the highways that you see. And also some of the charity, whether it's postman pats or various things where for people to make donations. So we developed a, a policy around how wide a footway had to be beyond the remit of people who've putting goods outside that, the shops or A boards. But fundamentally, the principle is as soon as something is on the highway, it is an obstruction on the. or A boards. But fundamentally, the principle is, as soon as something is on the highway, it is an obstruction on the highway. Um, um, when we're talking about the footways particularly, but we can take that in with that whole notice of motion if that's what Cabinet wishes us to.
I, I think we'd, we'd like that. And, and, um, you know, I mean, I think the, the trouble is, is one of those things that it's sort of, it's sort of developed by creep. So suddenly, shops think they have a right to store their massive bins outside and, and, you know, I mean, if they don't have the, you know, they say they haven't got, you know, they can't do it inside. Well, you know, those are, you know, why should everyone else suffer? Because they don't have, haven't designed their, um, retail or, or shop or cafe or whatever to, to take that into account. But anyway, I, I think if it's just referred to, because it's obviously something that needs, it's not straightforward, it needs to be looked at and worked out. Because at the same time, I don't want to be too prescriptive that every single A board is had to be removed from the pavement, because actually some of them are perfectly, actually, they, 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 you know, brighten up the high street in some ways. Um, so, but yeah, Jackie.
Just to pick up on, um, councillor Ledbetter's point about adding writing to the MPs, are we going to add that into the recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move that one, I'll move the recommendation.
I think that, yeah, okay. So, so Dan will do that. Um, any, any more for any more on this? Um, Dan, sorry.
Sorry, thank you, Leader. Just one more point. So you have got, as you said, that there is a motion coming back to Cabinet. There will be your Cabinet recommendation that'll follow. But I will obviously speak to the, um, to councillor Stephens as a raiser of the motion, just to say that we're going to consider the wider options. And if you'd like me to read out the amendment, you've just got an extra wording I'm happy to do to on your, your amendment.
I was only going to suggest it after patrol, it said, and local members upon that.
Exactly what we're proposing. Thank you.
Okay, good. We're all agreed on that. So members, um, there's a recommendation. Dan, you happy to do those recommendations with that slight amendment?
Happy to move five with the amendment that after three patrol, it says, and local members upon.
Yeah, okay, and thank you, Rose, Andrew. Right, um, can I have a second for that, please? Yeah, um, James and, um, all those in favour, please show. Thank you. Um, Agenda Item Nineteen, that's the minutes for noting. Um, there's no decisions to, necessary to be taken on that. Are we all happy to note the minutes from the Devon Assurance Partnership Committee? Yep, thank you. Um, twenty delegated action again for noting. Are we happy to note those delegated actions? Yep, okay, not hearing any voices of dissent. Um, Forward Plan. Um, members, any comments, queries? Are you happy with the Forward Plan as it is? Yeah, okay, okay. So we, we'd agree as it is, as it stands. I mean, obviously, that's a living document and it can change, um, depending on circumstances. Uh, um, Agenda Item Twenty-two, um, exclusion of the press and public. Um, that the press and public be excluded from the meeting for the following items of business under section one hundred A four of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two on the grounds that they involve the lightly disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of schedule twelve A of the Act, namely, the financial affairs of tenderers of original supply of council goods or services and of the county council in accordance with section thirty-sixth of the Freedom of Information Act twenty two thousand. By virtue of the fact of the public interest in maintaining, the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing information. So I'll propose that. Can I have a seconder? Thank you. All in favour? Thank you, gentlemen. Nice to see you.
And if you just give us a moment to stop the
Yeah, and we're going to shot the, the live stream. So let us know when live stream's finished and then we can. Yeah, okay, no.